Our citizens stood to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
Ms. Shanfield will not be here tonight. Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Poroska?
Here.
Mr. Stigl?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
I have not heard from Mr. Ross.
That's for approval of the minutes from ready to council meeting held on January 22nd, 2024.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special, that, five zero, Mr. Lauer. Special reports, recognition of Peterstownship police officers.
Keep cover.
Thank you.
So I wanted to thank you all for having us here tonight. We're going to recognize four of our tremendous officers for some of the things that they've done recently. First two officers I'd like to call up, Officer Pat, I'm sorry, Officer, say that again, Sergeant Andrew Green and Corporal Austin Klein. You guys can come up. So this is in reference to a burglary investigation. Sergeant Green and Corporal Klein, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate you for your exemplary performance in the course of your duties. The following is a synopsis of the incident. While on patrol on December 4th, 2023, Sergeant Andrew Green was informed by Washington County Control that there had been a burglary at the Dunkin' Donuts located in Cannonsburg. Knowing that there had been numerous burglaries at Dunkin' Donuts throughout the South Hills, both he and Corporal Austin Klein immediately headed to the Dunkin' Donuts in Peterstownship. Upon arrival, Corporal Klein contacted an employee standing in the doorway who related that there was someone inside breaking into the safe. Corporal Klein immediately informed Sergeant Green that there was a burglary in progress, drew his duty weapon, and entered the store. Shortly after entering, Corporal Klein encountered a subject dressed completely in black and holding a flashlight. The subject then ran, attempting to exit through the drive-through window. Corporal Klein held him with one hand, holstered his duty firearm with the other, then wrestled the subject to the ground, during which the subject sustained a minor head injury. After Corporal Klein handcuffed and searched the subject, the subject stood up. He then ran for the drive-through window a second time, managing to get outside in this attempt. Corporal Klein also dove through the drive-through window and immediately caught the subject, taking him into custody a second time. Sergeant Green arrived on scene as the subject went out the window. Sergeant Green ran around the front of the store and assisted Corporal Klein by holding the subject on the ground and searching him. The search by Corporal Klein was conducted in the store, and located on the subject was a key fob from an Infinity vehicle. Brown Infinity was later located at a residence on Center Church Road behind the Kreb Center on Route 19. Additionally, numerous grinder wheels and other burglary tools were located inside the Dunkin' Donuts. The subject, who refused to identify himself, was transported to Cannonsburg Hospital for evaluation and received medical attention for his head abrasion. Upon further investigation, it was determined that the subject was George Robert Cole Duval, with a recent address of Wilmington, Delaware. Cole Duval was lodged in the Washington County Jail, and he is the main suspect in nearly 40 Dunkin' Donut burglaries between Pennsylvania, Maryland, and New Jersey. The quick thinking, good judgment, and sound police work displayed by both officers allowed a prolific criminal to be taken into custody. There is no telling how long his crime spree would have continued. As a result of your efforts, not only was a criminal removed from the streets, but the image of the Peterstownship Police Department was enhanced. Your efforts are worthy of recognition, and this letter of commendation shall serve as a formal acknowledgement and a written record of a job well done. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Yeah, as you can see, the count of three say, breathe.
Corporal Klein, strong, I watched the video, it was amazing. Did you ever think you wouldn't make it through the window? That was, that would be the first thought I had, I don't think I'm going to make it through here. Great job, guys. Thank you.
All right. So the second letter we have tonight is for Officer Patrick Mazzata and Officer Trevor King. You guys would like to come up, please? All right, this is in relation to a medical incident. Officer Mazzata and Officer King, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your exemplary performance in the course of your duties. The following is a synopsis of the incident. While on patrol on January 15th, 2024, Officer Trevor King and Officer Patrick Mazzata were requested by Washington County Control to respond to Kimber Drive for a report of an opioid overdose. The complaint related that her boyfriend had used heroin and was unconscious. Based on a lack of pulse and breathing, she was in the process of starting cardiopulmonary resuscitation. Upon his arrival, Officer King found the victim on the bed and moved him to the floor. The victim was not breathing, and he had pinpoint pupils consistent with opioid use. Officer King then began CPR. Officer Mazzata administered a single dose of Narcan. Peterstownship ambulance service then arrived and searched for a pulse. They were able to locate one, and CPR was stopped. Ambulance service personnel then administered an additional dose of Narcan. The victim regained consciousness and refused further medical treatment. This is the sounding part. This was the second time that Officer Mazzata used Narcan on this individual. The Narcan supplied by the Washington County District Attorney's Office to the Peterstownship Police Department was once again utilized in the manner intended. The quick thinking, good judgment, and sound police work displayed by both officers allowed a life to be saved. As a result of your efforts, not only was a life saved, but the image of the Peterstownship Police Department was enhanced. Your efforts are worthy of recognition, and this letter of commendation shall serve as a formal acknowledgement and written record of a job well done. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Move forward, Tusk.
Come into the light.
Too tall. Trade in place, Trevor?
Probably a good idea.
There we go. No, shot it off my head. One, two, three. All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all again, Chief, and your team. We're in great hands, Peterstownship, with your team protecting and serving us every day, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we're very proud of you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, road surfacing plan update, Mr. Lauer?
This is Mr. Zabines.
Can you go to the, the graphic says we're surfacing Canada.
That's it.
Well, actually, this is, okay, well, it's an, okay, counsel, this time of the year is when I typically give my state of the roads address, so I will try to briefly do that. Just want to start by saying that last year, 2023, was year number three of our previous three-year paving program, so we were due to create a new one, and we did just that in the engineering department. Back in the fall, we drove all 120-plus miles of roadway. We videotaped it, we ran it through the robotics algorithm that we use, ranked those roads, whittled it down to about the worst 35 miles, and then through institutional knowledge and engineering judgment, whittled it down further to about 24 miles and mapped everything.
I addressed for the terms.
Right. Long and short, there was, there was a map, I handed out a packet, if you want to go a little bit further into detail and study this at home, you're welcome to do that. So the new three-year map is in your packet, and we use that as a tool, as a basis to pick the next three years' worth of road programs in 2024, 2025, and 2026. So the next, if you could go to the graph, Paul. Again, I provide this graph every year just to show counsel kind of like how many miles of roads we have. The top number on each bar is how many miles in that particular category that you can see on the bottom, zero to two years, three to five years. It's really an age chart of the roadways, and I point this out every year that, you know, we usually budget for 15 years, road life. Sometimes we hit it, sometimes we don't, but that's kind of, you know, the average age is about 17 years that we get out of a road. So you can see that, that red bubble on the right-hand side is everything above 15 years, which is about a quarter of the road network, about 27% at this point. So the reason I show this is I always just tell counsel, and I tell this at budget time, to never let your foot off the gas pedal with respect to paving roads, because I've seen communities that have skipped gears and have not kept up on it, and they don't get better by ignoring them, so I just always show this chart to hammer that point home. So we have a new three-year plan. We use that as a basis for picking the roads for this year, and I don't know if we have that list at all, or if we just, yeah. So this is the list of roads that we intend to pave this year. It's about five and a half miles total. We would also like to do, depending on the bid prices, how they come in, we'd like to do a rejuvenator contract like we usually do, we'd like to do another crack sealing contract this year too, to keep up on maintenance practices. The only thing I'd like to point out on this list is we intend to pave Frobe Road from end to end, from Beavout to Sugar Camp. I know that there is some active developments proposed on that road, Pembroke Manor has a couple homes. I think we should pave it regardless of what the future holds, because with respect to Frobe Farms, the timetable is unknown, the road is not in good shape, it's not going to hurt anything to pave it, and it's only a couple hundred feet out of a mile-long road, so I would hate to skip a section or do something that, in my opinion, wouldn't be a good idea to do, because I think if you come back and try to pave the section that we skipped at a later date, it's going to cost more in mobilization, and it's, it's worth just doing it now, and even if, even if the development was to go forward tomorrow, it would be years and years before they had lots that would affect Frobe Road, so I think we should go ahead and just do the whole road. The other road is Hidden Valley Road. From the country club up about 1,400 feet, there's a paving joint, and we need to go from there down. It's been about 15 years since we paved that. As counsel is likely aware, there's an active landslide on that road, kind of at the top. It is in the paving section that we intend to pave, but it hasn't really changed in two years, and even if the slide were to progress and it would compromise part of the road, we'd have to pave like about 200 feet of it again if we build a wall, so it, again, it's a small section out of the total road. I recommend that we just pave it all and tackle it here at once. You know, worst thing that could happen is if the slide continues or gets worse in the future, like I said, and we have to build a wall, we'll just have to repave like a 200-foot section. So that's the recommended list for this year. The schedule, we're going to try to follow what we typically do. We'll bid this in March, we're preparing bidding documents as we speak. March will be advertised, we'll accept bids on March 31st, and that'll put us in a position to award at the first council meeting in April, which will put us in a position to start the project by Memorial Day, start with drainage work, and probably mill and pave in June, July, and the hope is always to finish up before school starts in August. So that's the state of the roads.
Mark, last year, at this time, there was some deferred work from the year prior. Are there any roads left over from last year?
There are not, no. The contract was complete last year.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thanks, Mark, thank you for your.
Thank you, sir.
It's portion of meeting for audience comments limited to five minutes for non-agenda items. Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, no unfinished business. New business request to install traffic mirror at Arrowhead Trail Bridge over Beavout Road. Mr. Lauer?
So Mr. C., who lives kind of where that orange dot is off of the roundabout, has installed a mirror on the bridge for the purposes of enhancing his view coming out his driveway. One of the things that he's experienced is that people are coming out of the roundabout a lot quicker than they did when it was a, was a stop. He installed that without seeking permission from the township, and what I'm recommending to counsel is that we authorize the solicitor to draft and the manager to execute an agreement granting Mr. C. authority to install the mirror while indemnifying the township for any liability.
So good. Go ahead.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution authorizing opening of a bank account at the Clearview Credit Union.
So the township periodically shops opportunities to invest its idle funds. We currently have about $890,000 that has been set aside to fund the cost of post-retirement healthcare and payout of sick leave upon retirement. mistaken has shopped the local banks in town to get, to get the best rate, and that's being afforded by Clearview Federal Credit Union, and the APY is 5.15?
5%.
5%.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 020124, authorizing opening of bank account at Clearview Federal Credit Union.
Second.
Motion, second, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Five, oh, Mr. Lauer. Next item, request for departure from regulations contained in the Township subdivision and land development ordinance restricting the creation of a new lot along a collector's street.
Okay, so this agenda item is related to the agenda item that will follow, so we can, we'll provide you information on both at this time. This is a lot that exists on Thompsonville Road, immediately down below Juniper Woods. There is a restriction in our code that does not allow the creation of additional lots on a collector's street. The township has, from time to time, waived that provision where site distance is not a problem. So Mr. Mudry has looked at this, he agrees with the assertion of the developer that, in fact, in this particular case, that will not be a problem. So it's going to be my recommendation that council approved the departure from regulation to allow for the subdivision. The subdivision consists of creating one lot on Thompsonville Road in yellow and retaining the remainder, which, as I understand, will be used for a single home.
Is there a driveway there already?
There is, there is a driveway there, correct?
Yes. Is it on, on that yellow lot, or is it on?
I believe it's on the yellow lot, yes.
Yeah, it starts on Lot 2.
You're going to do us a favor and come up to the microphone, and you're going to write your name. That's the question I had, it's like, is it going to be two?
Yeah, there'll be two driveways, yeah. Two separate driveways. There'll be two driveways then, right?
Yes.
I'm Dave Housland with Harshman. So the existing driveway basically starts on Lot 2, where the, where the house used to be, comes through Lot 1, and comes out to Thompsonville Road. I haven't worked on the building plans, but there will be a driveway, that driveway is there, but there will be a driveway off Lot 1, and there will be a new driveway off of Lot 2. We did do a traffic control study, or trafficked, I'm sorry.
Site distance.
Site distance. Couldn't get it out. A site distance and compared that to what would be a PennDOT standard, we published that for the township, and then their, your traffic engineer then reviewed our, our site distance as well.
Wasn't this the same piece of property we approved a plan for last year that would create two or three more lots?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve a departure from regulations contained in the Township subdivision and land development ordinance restricting the creation of a new lot along a collector's street as shown on for the proposed Thompsonville Road subdivision.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, oh, Mr. Lauer.
I'll also make a motion that we approve for recording purposes the Thompsonville Road subdivision as shown on drawings prepared by Harshman C.E. Group LLC dated November 10th, 2023 for James Don Greco.
So move.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, oh, Mr. Lauer. Next agenda item, award of contract for the resurfacing of the tennis courts through the Omni National Cooperative Purchasing Program.
The 2024 Peterstownship budget includes an appropriation of $60,000 for the resurfacing of tennis courts. The township has received a quote of $56,685 from Vasco Sports Contractors through the Omni National Cooperative Purchasing Program. That's a purchasing program that's available to all municipalities in Pennsylvania, and we've utilized in the past, particularly for the purchase of equipment for the Public Works Department. In 2014, Vasco resurfaced the tennis courts, and while the average life expectancy for a, that type of treatment is six years, we have been able to stretch that well beyond that, in part because of the workmanship and approach they took when they installed that back in 2014. So it's, therefore, my recommendation, Peterstownship award a contract to Vasco Sports Contractor through the Omni National Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $56,685.
So move. Second.
A question, and with that resurfacing, would it make any sense to put pickleball lines on those courts?
There are pickleball lines on that court right now, depending on, and this is something we're going to have to figure out shortly, depending on what's happening up at Rolling Hills Park, you may or may not want those, but, you know, that's something we can discuss and figure out.
I'd probably add them later.
Yeah. About motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Ordinance amended Peterstownship Code of Ordinance as Chapter 410 entitled Vehicle and Traffic So As To Add Stop Intersections.
So a couple meetings ago, we had a discussion with regard to the creation of an all-stop intersection at Brush Run Road and Brookwood Road, and in fact, those, those signs probably have been installed today. For those to be enforceable, it will take amending the Township's Code of Ordinance, and it's my recommendation that council adopt Ordinance 901, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinance as Chapter.
I'll make a motion that council adopt Ordinance Number 901, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinance as Chapter 410 entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Add a Stop Intersection.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution authorizing the destruction of records in accordance with Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual issued by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 02024, authorizing the destruction of municipal records in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual issued by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission.
Tagging. Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Resolution, appointing a tax collector.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 02-03-24, appointing Tracy Ekin as the Peterstownship Tax Collector.
Second.
Congratulations.
Motion, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Authorization to enter into settlement agreement and mutual release with St. Clair Hospital and Huntington National Bank, Mr. Lauer?
So, you know, maybe before I start, I just, I think one of the things that's gotten lost in this whole process is, I think it's important for everybody to understand that St. Clair Hospital was a valued member of our community, you know, and towards that end, in November of 2021, Peter, Peterstownship Council actually took action to assist them with the, the financing of this project that's under discussion, as well as the refinancing of their existing bonds. I think the other thing that's important to remember is that Peterstownship has a longstanding policy regarding the interconnection of properties, and that, that is driven by good public policy, which encourages commercial properties on Route 19 to cooperate together so that people can exit safely at a traffic light. So what's in front of you tonight is a proposal to settle a, a lawsuit that's out there regarding the township's ability to, to actually have that type of, of cross-access available at the hospital and at Huntington Bank. So what's, what's from, and there are other provisions in this settlement agreement, if you read it over, that have arrangements between the hospital and Huntington Bank, but what I think's important for you to understand is how this agreement affects Peterstownship and its ability to have this cross-access in place. So the thing that I think, I don't like to speak for Mr. Smith, but the thing I think Mr. Smith and I both agree on is that if, in fact, everyone worked in good faith, the, the agreement as proposed would work. Having said that, I have concerns about, it doesn't guarantee that, in fact, that cross-access could be in place. So let me go through this, and I, I know there's people here representing the hospital and representing Huntington Bank, and they can speak toward this, and Mr. Smith could as well.
Even before you get to that point, in principle, we have an agreement with the bank and with the hospital. It's just a contingency on the timing and the implementation of that agreement. That's what we're going to discuss tonight, where we've asked the hospital to discuss that with you as well, because they are seeking a building permit that's been withheld due to what the township believes to be violations of their site plan. And we don't have finalization of the new site plan yet, which would be the hangup of the potential settlement, but that's just the backdrop for Mr. Lauer to walk through here.
So, so what the, what the ordinance requires is that, that between the commercial properties, that there be a permanent easement established, allowing people ingress and egress across both sites. And in addition to that, it requires that there be a cross-access use agreement with the township, so that the township has the authority to enforce those easements. And then finally, it requires that there be a maintenance agreement between the hospital and Huntington Bank, so, so that there is an equitable sharing of the costs associated with maintaining the easement, as well as the, the driveway, which they would cross. So the, the agreement itself, again, from the perspective of the township, is that it provides for a cross-access point between the two properties, and, and everyone agrees that the conceptual plan prepared and submitted by Huntington Bank is not only acceptable, but quite frankly, it's preferable to the alignment that was originally shown. And this drawing shows you that cross-access. So if you look at the drawing, it, it brings you into the, the hospital property up to a point where you can create a plus intersection with the driveway alignments at the hospital. We personally think this is preferable, and I think everybody agrees it's preferable, to where it was originally shown, which was up closer to Route 19. So from that perspective, I think we have something that we can all agree on and work towards. Is the drawing clear to everyone, or is?
Yeah, I think Mark and Mr. Mudry both reviewed that plan.
Yeah, actually, that, I think to a hard extent, that drawing is a reflection of Mr. Mudry's thoughts on the appropriate location. Huntington Bank's responsible for engineered site plan drawings that comply with the Township's zoning ordinance, and these will be reviewed by the Township staff and approved by Peterstownship Council. Now, normally, the site plans would go to the planning commission, and council would never see them, but we think because what we're dealing with is an attempt to settle a litigation, it perhaps makes more sense to have council involved in, in simply approving the site plan. The thing that I would point out to you that I, I think is noteworthy is, having talked to Huntington Bank at the end of January, it was their belief that this site plan could be completed by the end of, of February, and therefore, you would have engineered drawings, and a lot of the, and a lot of the contingencies that are in. are in here with regard to compliance, if in fact you waited for that, wouldn't be necessary because everybody would know what that is, and both parties would be in a position to be able to provide easements. The township zoning ordinance requires St. Clair Hospital to provide a permanent easement, authorizing cross-access. The hospital's proposing to provide a temporary easement until Peter's Township Council approves the revised site plan, at which time a permanent easement will be recorded. While I think this works, as long as everybody moves forward, what concerns me is that you could have a gap, because what, in the agreement, what the hospital indicates is that there's a dispute, they're not only withdrawing from this agreement, they're withdrawing from the temporary easement agreement, in which case the township's actually, I think, left in a difficult position.
So, we're back in court?
We're back in court.
Now, that's an outlier, in terms of, I think, what the parties in the hospital can speak to this as well, but that prospect exists. And to be fully candid, we asked the hospital for, look, come hell or high water, where you just agree to the easement, let council vote, and this gets approved. The easement's not the issue in so much as, I think Paul will probably get to, it's married to Huntington providing some additional parking for the hospital.
Yeah, yes, because the failure that they reference is not only perhaps a failure from the township to approve the site plan, it's a failure from Huntington Bank to provide what else is in that agreement, and we have no control over that. One of the things that Mr. Smith and I had suggested is that if what the agreement called for was a temporary easement, and it simply said that that temporary easement stayed in place until such time as a permanent easement is recorded, quite frankly, from the township perspective, we'd have no reservation about signing this, because that easement would be in place.
Yeah, and understand, it isn't, in the grand scheme of things here, what the hospital wants from a timing standpoint isn't necessarily to settle this tonight, in so much as they're looking for a building permit. And so, in the absence of an agreed-upon settlement agreement, we can't direct staff to issue that building permit. So, the hospital was asked to marry the, in the agreement, an occupancy permit to a permanent cross-access or resolution court. And so, that is where, you know, we are, where everybody's sort of guarding their flank on this one, as to what if something happens. I don't foresee the site plan being an issue because Mr. Zemitis and Mr. Mudry have already looked at it. And I think as it comes in, everyone seems to be agreeable, there could be something that comes up along those lines. It's the bank's ability to get that parking lot approved, potentially through Washington County Conservation. No one is 100% sure because whether they can do, we think they can, but if they don't get that additional parking, and the hospital pulls out, then everything kind of falls, yet we've issued the building permit, and that's kind of where we are. But the hospital's here tonight because obviously, you know, they have plans, they have needs, and they've waited, and they want, and they've acted in complete good faith through this process in negotiating this, but they're looking for the ability to get that building permit.
So, upon approval of the engineered site plan, the hospital will comply with the Township zoning ordinance, which includes those three items that I pointed out at the beginning that are required by the ordinance. The terms of the settlement agreement requires the township to issue a building permit to the hospital upon execution agreement and recording of the temporary easement. The hospital acknowledges that an occupancy permit will not be issued until the notice of violation is dismissed. The notice of violation is only dismissed when in fact, the permanent easement is recorded, as well as the agreements.
The other thing I wanted to add there, Paul, the notice of violation is really the jurisdictional item that puts us in court. That's the one that started this process, so if we would walk away from that, you know, the whole fight was in our deny, or issuing the violations to St. Clair, which caused them to appeal.
So, what isn't clear to me is what the remedy is. If in fact, we don't issue an occupancy and the occupant, and the building is occupied, I think you'll be in a difficult position. The other thing is, if for some reason the temporary easement disappears in the middle while construction is going on, I don't think that gives you a right to issue a stop work order. And it's, you know, it's, the building permit is part of what's driving everyone to come to a settlement. So, there is this proposal there, and the other proposal, as I indicated in the venue's report, is to wait till the end of February or the beginning of March, when the engineer drawings are done. At that point in time, the council can take action on those, to approve those. You'll know exactly where the easement needs to be, and it can be recorded. There's no reason at that point that the agreements aren't entered into. But either approach could work, as long as everybody works in good faith.
Well, what's the reason that the document doesn't say that the temporary easement will remain in effect until the permanent easement is executed?
Well, it does. I mean, essentially.
No, it doesn't.
Until the permanent is in place, but there's no guarantee there will be the permanent, so that's the problem. If the permanent easement falls because another party of the agreement falls, we're back in court. That's the hangup.
If you don't end up with a permanent easement, then you have a problem. If something happens where one of the parties doesn't.
Yeah, but if the document says that the temporary easement remains in effect until such time as the permanent easement is created, couldn't you make?
Yeah, or further order of court.
Or further order of court. So, that temporary easement, I'm Pierce Richardson, and Kano Gates representing the hospital. So, the agreement provides, the temporary easement agreement would be signed at the same time as the settlement agreement and recorded in the Washington County Recorder's Office. That would stay in place until either the permanent easement is recorded, which would replace that, if the site plan is, revised site plan is approved, or until the court would order otherwise. So, there's really no risk of a gap there. That's going to be of record. The hospital has no unilateral right to walk away from that temporary easement agreement once it's recorded. That would require a court order if the permanent easement, for some reason, has never worked out.
And I think, Pierce, in fairness, that court order is not the court weighing in on whether it's good or bad to remove it, but ultimately, St. Clair advancing their case of closing the permanent easement down altogether. That's what we've been litigating, so.
Right, so we've structured this to protect the interests of really all parties. So, the township, in our view, is protected because that temporary easement agreement would be recorded. When the bank completes construction, it would have use of that existing access point until we get to one of those two alternatives. And the hospital could not occupy the space it's building out if the building permit is issued, until the permanent easement is recorded. So, the hospital would be proceeding at risk. But this might be a good time for Mike Flanagan to come up, because he's going to address some of these points for you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity of being here this evening. As Pierce said, my name is Mike Flanagan, I'm the President Chief Executive Officer of St. Clair Health. And let me just start by saying that we have a longstanding relationship with Peter's Township, and I want to echo Mr. Lauer's comments. We're really pleased to have our development here at Peter's Township, and we're really pleased to serve this community, and we're proud of that relationship. As you know, for most of the past year, St. Clair Hospital and Huntington National Bank have been working very closely on a cooperative basis to find a mutually agreeable solution on the matter of cross-access, in compliance with township requirements. Collectively, as Mr. Lauer mentioned as he was going through the design, I think we have a better solution today. I think all parties are in agreement that that design is a better design. It addresses the safety issues that were the reason why, you know, we had concern from the very beginning, and also addresses the egress issues that the bank obviously was concerned about. Through this process, we've also been working very closely with Mr. Lauer and Mr. Smith as part of these discussions, and I want to thank them for their cooperation. They've been good partners. Our understanding is, similar to what Mr. Lauer said, that conceptually, this design is acceptable to the municipality and to the township. While we recognize there are some details remaining, clearly, we just went through a few of them, we believe that it's important, for a variety of reasons which I'll get into, for us to move forward, hopefully with your approval. As you are aware, that we have been requesting this building permit, you know, for quite some time. We want to build out 5,000 square feet of unfinished space that has been unfinished since that building was initially completed in 2013. Our plan is to occupy it with primary care, which will then allow us to add some other specialty services to that facility, obviously all in service to the community. In every community, you know, certainly in this region and throughout Washington, Pennsylvania, there's a shortage of physicians in every community, accelerated by the pandemic. And so, we're looking to bring more physicians and more providers to this community, to better serve this community. And so, it's essential for us to move forward, and I understand the issues and the concerns that Mr. Lauer was addressing. But we would like to have the approval of council this evening to at least begin construction. Construction will take six months to get completed. I fully expect this process is going to be resolved in less than six months. And as the CEO of the health system, I can guarantee you, we're going to be working cooperatively with the township, as well as with Huntington Bank, to see this through to completion. So, the hospital understands and accepts that any tentative approval of the current plan, and then the issuance of the building permit would be conditioned upon the final receipt and final approval of the engineered site plan drawings. As you know, the final engineering drawings, as Mr. Lauer mentioned, are still in process. And so, whether it's two weeks, three weeks, a month, you know, I hope it's two weeks, I hope it's three weeks, but we don't know that for certain. But it still has to be reviewed by us, and certainly by the township with their approval. So, we understand and accept that if the building permit is issued, and we are able to commence work now with a tentative approval on the site plan, an occupancy permit would not be issued. We accept that risk. Would not be issued until there's final approval by the township. So, we understand that risk. We've bid the project, we're ready to go, and obviously, we have providers that are ready to work and provide care for this community. So, we look forward to working again on a cooperative basis with the township, as well as with Huntington National Bank. Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing council should note, in anticipation that this is going to be resolved, although it's been a little bit of a slog, we've stopped the court proceedings. Briefs have been filed, the judge keeps pushing the argument date. We did have our outside engineers review the building permit application. I believe the fee was paid, Paul, in the.
No, the township has not twice reviewed the building drawings. The payment occurs at the time when the permit is issued, the township has assumed the cost of that up to this point.
But I believe the plans have met the outside parties' expectations.
That's right, yeah. We're prepared to issue a building permit.
So, maybe I could help you summarize the dilemma here. If the township waits until you get site plan approval, and are no contingencies, when it's signed and approved, it's final. There's nothing left to do. Everybody agrees there's permanent access, it's going to be recorded, everything falls. In this proposal, the bank, or the hospital, I'm sorry, would want their building permit, it's the only reason they're here now, otherwise they'd be waiting until the final site plan would be there as well, that they would agree to issue a temporary easement agreement to allow for that temporary access until permanent, once it's approved. The back and forth and what they've added was that occupancy language. So, what's to hold them from once they get their building permit and move forward, not to pull it off the table and say, well, it's not going to work. We've got our building permit, we just will go litigate and try to shut the permanent access down, which, what we wanted from the beginning of this ordeal. And that's why they've tried to marry it to the occupancy permit, to provide township some protection against that possibility. I suspect, you know, whoever wins or loses, if we do go to court, it's going to keep going too. So, it's not going to end in Judge Gillman, my guess.
And that's not in anybody's interest.
No, so, that's the flip side. There's some risk with voting. The agreement itself, the terms themselves, are acceptable to myself, Mr. Lauer, and anyone else that's reviewed them, our engineers with the plans. I believe St. Clair, I've talked to Huntington's council, everybody's on board. It's just the timing of this extra site plan with this extra parking. And Pierce, I don't know, and maybe you or Mark could speak to that parking, because I'm saying it generically as to what it is and what's going on there. Mike, I don't care who.
I'm happy to speak to it. Yeah. So, just to make it easier, if you're familiar with the site plan, this was the original cross-access. And so, working with Huntington, we agreed to relocate the cross-access here, which then eliminated approximately 10 or 12 of our existing parking spaces. And so, through our negotiation with Huntington, we were looking to just reclaim those parking spaces in the back, that's all.
On Huntington property?
Correct.
And that's why, and Huntington's agreed to that, they just don't have approvals. And Mark, who do we think, maybe from Washington County Conservation?
I'm not sure yet.
But that plan hasn't come in for engineering with you, that's the hangup.
So, the action tonight is whether we issue a building permit?
No, well, in part, the settlement agreement, if you agree to it tonight and say, yeah, we'll sign this agreement, everybody signs off, they can move forward under the terms of that agreement to get their building permit approved. Otherwise, we wait. And so, until there's a permanent easement in place and everything's finalized, and there's no risk. The risk right now is really, that's why the CEO is here, because the hospital's need for this space and the potential delay, and everybody's efforts, how long that's going to continue to move. So, it's a, you know.
But the action that council needs to take tonight is to either authorize or not authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a settlement agreement. And once that agreement is actually executed by all parties, it's only then that the township's in a position to issue a building permit.
And when we record the temporary easement agreement?
Any discussion, counsel?
Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township official to execute the settlement agreement.
A second.
With respect to the very cordial manner in which this evening has been conducted, I have a very long taste with regard to the litigation and the actions and the accusations that have been made at this council and to our township. I will be voting no with regard to this proposed, exercising this agreement, and think that it's in the best interest of this community to wait till all these matters get finalized.
Any other discussion? We've got a motion and a second. I'll roll call.
Yeah, sure. Never done that before, but.
First roll call. First roll call. So, Mr. Cozer?
Aye. I'm staying. I'm accused.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Sagan?
Aye.
I am a yea, yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
And I'm sorry, it's been a long story, and I have not liked it at all. This is a community that pledges, at least in my standing, to work together, and how we've gotten here has been so protracted that I think you created the situation yourselves. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lauer?
No.
Okay. Moving on, contracts for the design of Phase 1 of the Peter Township Aquatic Center?
So, including the doc, doc, it's our, I thought I had them here, but I don't. Our conceptual drawings for the splash pad as done by Kimblebrook Gett. As drawn, the estimated cost of the project, including a 5% contingency, is somewhere between 5.5 million and 6.4 million. The township is the recipient of 3.2 million in matching grant funds, and the difference will be paid with bond proceeds which are on hand. The next step in the process is to develop bid documents. Kimblebrook Gett's proposal to undertake that work for a fee of $188,000, which is 3.4 to 2.9% of the estimated project cost. And the reason that number is as low as it, that percentage is as low as it is, is a reflection of the fact that much of the work that was done, particularly with regard to the civil engineering. much of the work that was done, particularly with regard to the civil engineering, is being incorporated in this project and has already been done. So what this would do is to provide for the design of the support building for the splash pad, as well as coordination of the splash pad design with our preferred supplier, Vortex, and then also creating the permit documents, as well as the bid documents managing the bid itself. If the contract's awarded, the fee for contract administration is $64,900. Both Mr. Zomitis and myself believe the fees are appropriate, given the scale and nature of the project. And for this reason, I'm recommending that Peters Township Council authorize the township manager to execute a design contract with Kimball, Gatt, in the amount of $188,000 for the purpose of designing and bidding Phase 1 of the Peters Township Aquatic Center.
So I'm moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, hi. My name is Eileen Burkhart. I live at 211 Village Green Drive. My husband and I have been members, we've lived in the community for 30-plus years and have raised four kids in the township. I would like to speak on behalf of the residents in Peters Township that oppose the aquatic center for some, for certain reasons. I've reviewed the current proposed plan for the splash pad, and I can't get past the fact that 80% of that prime spot there will be a cement slab, used by 20%, or used 20% of the year because of climate, and by 10% of the residents. I passed Rolling Hills on my way here tonight and thought that space will be empty this month, next month, and the month after, due to the amount of time that a splash pad or pool would be used. I know there's a vote tonight that will probably move the project forward, but I hope you consider there are alternatives to that space. That may not require, that may require not using grant money. That should be okay and the right thing to do. The $3.2 million grant will be long gone when the township is left to foot the bill for the expense and maintenance of the center. Spending just to use grant money is financially irresponsible, given the huge cost to taxpayers. So thanks for listening. I just felt that it needed to be said. There were a lot of people in the township that feel that way and may not voice their opinion. So I just wanted to let you know how we feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I was uncertain and asked, Paul, prior to our meeting, that it was understood that we are only entertaining Phase 1 of the building plan as it relates to the information we had in the packet.
The building, it would be this building here.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
We have 3 to 2. Next item, I'm sorry, motion passes 3 to 2. Payroll bills, Mr. Seiden?
I reviewed the payroll bills prior to this evening's meeting, found them all to be acceptable and need that they be approved.
Thank you very much.
I'll second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 5 to 0. Mr. Low, correspondence?
The only piece of correspondence is a notification from District 205 that we are due to negotiate the lease contract this year.
Any questions about that? Does anyone want to say anything or comment on the minutes of the board meetings? They're all well-written.
Yeah, I'm impressed with the quality of the reports, but what position are we going to support or deny on the zoning hearing board matter? I don't think I am an advocate of a zero property line.
Well, it's my understanding that the reason why there's that zero, request for a zero lot line actually has to do with a paper street that is no longer, well, it's in existence as a paper street, nothing more. And that is why the property owners are asking for that setback. He has a fee.
There was a paper street in the, what, next to this house?
Yes.
How did they know that the paper streets have actually been terminated? I mean, unless they filed a quiet title action and they wiped out everybody's rights.
I don't think they've done that, no.
Well, then we should oppose it. Because here's the thing, as John will tell you, if you own a lot in a neighborhood that has a paper street, you have a right in that street, regardless of whether that street's open or not. And if somebody else in that neighborhood someday decides, hey, you know, I want to put a driveway through there, just if for no other reason, just to spite their neighbor who put this big addition on, they have the right to do that. And then we're going to have somebody here in front of us arguing, why did we allow a house to be built all the way to the...
To the edge.
To the edge of the paper street. So we should absolutely oppose that. Because I think we had this, didn't we have this discussion like two or three years ago? Maybe, maybe it was longer ago. We were, we were talking about going around, looking at there, how many unopened paper streets there were in the township, if we were going to have these kinds of issues.
This is in a unique neighborhood, too. This is down, what's the name of the paper street?
I'm not sure the name, but it's down in Hattie.
Yeah.
That explains a lot.
Well, you have paper streets down, so.
Oh, there's paper streets, oh, there's, you know, there's a paper street off of Mary that connects Pleasant Avenue up to Mary that nobody knows about.
And ideally, if they're smart and they go and file a title, they're going to pick up that property. They won't need a setback, probably. You know, they could go where they want, and they can move their fence to the middle of that road.
Well, I would support the township taking a position opposing the variance request, encouraging them to take the step that would afford them that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, if I were in their shoes, I would have gone with a quiet title action before I saw the variance, but that's...
Yeah, the problem the township has, if the variance is granted, and someone goes in even for some prescriptive right over that, we're now allowing a car driving right next to one inch from a home.
Yeah, it's not a good deal.
Is that what they're building, is that what's...
What are they...
It's actually a carport.
A carport.
Some sort of structure, yeah.
It is a structure, but it's a carport.
But it's still right up to the street line. So if somebody comes in and opens up the street, you'll have the pavement all the way up to the carport then.
So the consensus of councils that we should officially oppose that?
This is a voting action, correct?
No, it's a consensus.
Yes, we have a consensus. Yes, I agree with that. Okay. Any agenda items for the next meeting? No? Motion for adjournment?